Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting of April the 16th at the City Council. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? Wes, would you please lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Potem Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Randles.
Present.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Our first thing is items, the presentation by the Tropical Elementary TK children. You want to come up, please? Stephanie, you're going to do this, please?
They will introduce themselves. Okay, hold on a minute.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brayden. Thank you for having the Tropical Kingdom visit. We appreciate your support for the kindness symbol.
Hello, my name is Emily. The official proclamation for the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida. Whereas there is-
Rezoning and making a portion of the building, uh, air-conditioned mini-storage. If we then have an end-user that comes in in order to develop an out parcel, it could generate the sufficient trips in order to help the city apply for a signalized intersection.
Okay.
I recognize that's a double-edged sword because in all municipalities, more traffic is not a desirable thing. The way I look at it, because of the net reduction in traffic counts for the mini-storage, would probably be greatly offset by any addition of any out parcel. So, from a traffic standpoint, it probably wouldn't contribute, but it may make it more palatable for the DOT when they review the local MPO's analysis of a light there. That's a long-winded answer to your question, but-
No, but it's the one I needed to hear.
That's about all I know.
Because you, like I, kind of like to see what we're doing.
So, there's a bigger picture, and I'm happy to come down and paint that at some other point in time, but there is planned development, not only for the parcel in question before you today, but Mr. Barker, my business partner, on the other side of the road with the two hotel developments that we're doing north of the Radisson, and potentially in the future, should market demand warrant it, there could be some additional development on the south side of Thurm there that would then also generate sufficient trips to warrant a light there. But the people that, as Todd and I discussed, the party that really needs to carry the torch on that is the municipality itself because of the city's desire to have a light there carries so much more weight with the DOT than the private parties.
Well, that's what I need to hear. We're working on it, though, as you know. We probably promised Comprehensive Health that we'd work our hardest to get a light there for them. They got over 400 people turning left across A-1A with all the Cape traffic going in the morning, and it's less than a desirable situation.
It is a very, very dangerous part of A-1A to make a, you know, either a left northbound from the west side or a southbound turn from the east side of the road. It's quite challenging.
Okay. Mr. Chair, that's all I have, and thank you, Mr. Hermanson, because those are some kind of things that I read in here, and I know you read in here, but I just wanted to hear them. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rock, anybody else? Wes, you got it? Anybody outside? We'll ask you again. Nobody wants to, we'll close public. Let me look for a motion to-
Mr. Chair, I, Randles, would move to approve this at the second public hearing. And the item, of course, that we're talking about is ordinance number 092019.
I second it.
08.
082019. I beg your pardon. 082019.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to pass ordinance 08219 by Mr. Randles and seconded by Ms. Raymond. Let me call the roll.
Mayor Potem Brown.
Bore.
Mayor Hoag.
Bore.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond.
Bore.
Our next item is ordinance number 09219, and this is the first reading.
Ordinance 092019, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 110-28 of the city code related to due process and special local notice requirements for certain zoning hearings, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance. This ordinance proposes modifying an existing section in the city code, 110-28. Makes a few technical amendments related to noticing the public hearings that are governed by this section of the code, including, but not limited to, special exception, variance, requests, and rezonings. The changes clarify one aspect related to postponement or continuance of a previously publicly noticed meeting. Currently, the initial, the first meeting needs to be noticed at least 14 calendar days prior to the date of the hearing. This ordinance clarifies after the initial, that 14 days is related to the initial public hearing. In some instances, the boards do postpone or continue the hearing to a date certain. This ordinance, if it were passed, would require that the postponed or continued hearing be publicly noticed for at least three calendar days unless otherwise required by the board to give the board some flexibility to postpone to date certain hearings that may, for example, last longer than anticipated. Now, under the existing code, the advertising, the local advertisement requirements that staff typically follows is posting the affected property. That's not being changed. Posting at City Hall and on the city's official website, that's not being changed. Then there's a notice to all owners of real property within 500 feet of the subject property. We're proposing adding the word approximately adjacent to and within 500 feet of the subject property because of, you know, it's not that precise sometimes relative to the database that the city uses with the property appraisers. So, approximately just clarifies that, you know, the lines drawn with the software may be off a few feet. All notices required by this paragraph are sent by regular mail. The only exception today is for a rezoning, which has to be sent by certified mail. This ordinance proposes to strike the certified mail requirement for rezonings, and that rezonings would be subject to regular mail notices. In addition, the applicant is noticed as well by certified mail currently. Since it's the applicant, we're proposing to change that to just providing the applicant regular mail or email with respect to the application hearing. Typically, staff is in frequent contact with applicants relative to their zoning application and by email, and felt that just regular mail or email would suffice in advising the property owner that their application is set for the hearing. In addition, as you know, the city staff is working on a possible comprehensive administrative rezoning relative to updating the city's zoning map due to a lot of inconsistency issues of what actually is built versus the current zoning district. That project is making its way through. This ordinance would propose that in such instances, when there's a comprehensive administrative rezoning, a slightly different process, local notice process would occur due to the fact that in many cases, when you do these comprehensive administrative rezonings, there, the certified mailings that's currently required today would be extremely onerous on staff as well as expensive to handle. So, we're proposing a slightly amended process relative to those types of administrative hearings. So, I'm sure council may have some technical questions. Staff and I are prepared to answer those. Mayor.
Thank you. Council?
No, I understand it. And I know the difficulty, being somewhat familiar with the post office and time it takes to get a certified letter approved for the resident to have to come pick it up or not pick it up in some choices. So, and mostly this is, I guess I read in here a place to the attorney I would read that this is a state-approved prior condition? Did I read that?
I'm not sure if you read that or not, but the local, these are local requirements?
Yes.
Now, with respect to rezonings, there is a state notice requirement on rezonings, and if the city were to provide direct mailing relative to a rezoning application, it would just simply be by regular mail. It would not be, would not be by certified mail.
So, that would meet the state requirements, yes?
That would meet the state requirements, is consistent with that.
Okay. That's the important part, that we don't go outside that boundary.
Now, the state-
I certainly support it.
State notice requirements, at the very least, are the minimum notice requirements relative to these hearings. In many cases, though, the state law does not address specific notice requirements for special exceptions and variances, but with respect to rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, there are minimum requirements in the statute that staff would have to comply with. In addition, Cape Canaveral goes above and beyond the statutory minimum requirements on many of these applications, requiring the posting of the affected property, for example, or posting at City Hall and posting on the city officials' website. Currently, state law does not require any of that.
I feel comfortable, Mr. Chair, that this indeed is meeting the letter of the law, plus we're already going beyond. And the intent is to protect property rights, and indeed, that somebody knows what's happening to the neighbor's property, and I support this. That's not a motion, but that's just, I just-
Was this written out through?
In favor of it.
Wes?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got some questions, just for clarification as far as, when we say regular mail, is that the same as first-class mail?
Yes.
Would it be, because you have, you know, standard bulk mail, which is kind of like a black hole, if you will. You send it out, and you don't get any confirmation back. You know, do not, you know, undeliverable on first class comes back where this doesn't. And my first concern was, because it doesn't specify regular mail, would it be helpful to say first-class mail in the proposed ordinance? Because I can see how that could create confusion if you went through a mailhouse and just did a bulk mail, and the city is, has no way of verifying.
Yeah, Mr. Morrison, we apply postage here inside City Hall. When we're doing a mailing, we actually do all of that right here in-house. We do not farm it out to a third party or a contractor or anything like that. So, we do send all of our mails. It's first class.
Okay. Thank you. And is, I guess, the way it's written today, there's no conflict with state law. It's fine today. It actually exceeds what state law requires, is that?
That is correct, yes. And if the city council should decide to pass the ordinance, we would still be doing more than the state law requires because of the website, the posting on the property, and the way we handle those. So, from a transparency point of view and all that, we are well exceeding, even with the proposed change, the state requirements.
Thank you.
And these are expenses that apply to the applicant as from the private sector point of view as well as to the city in those rare situations where the city is the applicant, those mailing costs, if you will.
Thank you. The, I went back and was doing just the history and working with citizens to understand kind of where this came from. Is it correct that this particular section in 12810 was added in 2008, I believe? Ordinance number four, 2008? I think it actually came from, this is back when Todd Morley, I believe, you were our building official at the time, and you had proposed, and I went back in the notes and read through the P and Z minutes. Today, I believe, Mayor Hoag, you were on that body, and at the time, Councilmember Randles, you were our mayor. And adding this in at that time, if you follow the history, seemed like a good idea, specifically notifying property owners via certified mail for rezoning, special exceptions. Guess my question to the council is, and staff, kind of as the mayor would allow, is to let us know, how did we get here historically from a staff perspective? Where did this originally come from? I see costs as being a concern and time, especially doing this in-house. And I have some separate questions on the costs as well, but I guess for the council, what has changed in your mind, I guess, Rocky, Councilmember Randles, from now, you seem to be for this, but at the time, there was an intentional addition to say certified mail will be required for these types of situations, rezoning, special exception, et cetera?
I think that's a good, a good question for consideration. And I kind of have an answer, not specifically for that, but council members sometimes do change their mind after they get more information. And I've written a little note down here. It always seems to serve me well. On any given subject, most people, including me as a city council member, make decisions that are based on the current information that we have at that time, and that's true of all of us. If in the future, we discover a new or additional information that we did not have before, and it proves our previous information was incorrect or incomplete, most prudent individuals change their opinion on the subject due to the new correct information. There was a time years and years ago that there was a question about, did we properly notify, gosh, that's a long time ago. Did we properly notify people? We'd send a certified letter out, it wouldn't get picked up. It didn't accomplish. A person comes back, it's not refused, which is unclaimed. The person didn't get it. So, it served a purpose then. I don't believe it now serves a purpose with all the additional email, the additional websites that we have. And that's a good question. I guess as we get more information and times change, we change our opinion. I was for doing everything possible, almost knocking on people's doors so they could understand what we're doing, but I don't think the need is great now.
Mayor, I'd like to take a stab at that one as well. Yeah, if the council's been watching what's going on around them, the state legislature right now is looking at modifying public notice requirements up in Tallahassee. And one of the things that they're thinking about doing is doing away with basically newspaper ads. And if you look at Representative Fine, who I think is, he's the gentleman who's really pushing this, if you look at his justifications on why he's thinking this is a good idea, one of the things that he suggests is that with the advent of the internet and webpages and the, just the upsurge in that, that really is, in certain situations, taking the place of a lot of these mail notices and the paper notices. So, I think, you know, to Mr. Morrison's comment about back in '08, a lot's changed in 11 years on how cities work and how we operate. And 11 years ago, if you looked at the city webpage, did we have a city webpage 11 years ago? I wasn't here. If we did, I'm doubting it was very robust, probably a good word. But now, if you have, if you have an opportunity to look at the city webpage, it's very dynamic, and there's a lot of information on there. We've actually hired several people who, that's their job, is to make sure that the word is getting out to the public, and we rely upon that very greatly. And I would suggest, in my opinion, that we communicate a lot more completely and thoroughly through our city webpage and our multiple platforms than we do with a notice stuck in the back in the, in either the classified section of the Florida Today. And remember, too, we're not saying we're not going to send mail notices out. That's not the case. We're suggesting that we do send mail notices out, but they're not going to be certified. So, we're not trying to lessen our transparency. I mean, there's a, there is a paper trail of who and when and how many of these notices that we send out, regular mail. Yes, I will say that with certified mail, you're going to get, sometimes, as Rocky alluded to, residents or people who are getting, supposed to get their green card or their certified, never pick it up. And we, there's alternate paths to take, because we deal with that in code enforcement on a regular basis. People just don't pick up certified mail.
Or they refuse to.
Or they refuse to.
Intentionally.
Yes. So-
I was going to say, most of them would be, a lot of them even go out of town. The owners are actually out of town that are notified, so they don't even, they don't even care.
Yeah. So, my, I guess to wrap it up, my point is that we're not, we're not trying to skirt our responsibilities. We're not trying to lessen the transparency. What we're doing is we're looking at cost savings for the city while at the same time maintaining a public responsibility, frankly, to inform our residents of what's going on. And as I said, back in '08, we didn't do a lot of the things that we're doing now. So, we feel like this is a prudent approach when you look at it in a global nature. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, you haven't had a chance to speak, but-
I have, my comment's basically the same as Rocky's. Back, things change. I changed my mind on things. A lot of things I voted for back years ago, yeah, we had a lot different city back years ago. We had, we had very little control of a lot of stuff. We don't, as, today, we have probably a lot better control of what's going on than years ago. I could, I could tell you some things that I don't want to really tell you, but the transparency part is probably just as great, if not greater, with the social media notifications. We do post the properties, which are required. And also, like Mr. Dickey mentioned, the state of Florida, I watched the thing where Randy Fine and Sheriff Avia was there. Brad, I don't remember if you were there or not, but they had the transparency issue of doing away with all newspaper notifications. And the constitutional offices, their notifications are 20 million times your fold of what we have to do. They have like 330 property, taxable property units, so I could see doing away with a lot of this stuff as long as we have the means of still getting the information out there to the public by all these platforms that are there on social media, website, our posting of the property, and then a general mailing to the public, which would go to the property owners in New York, California, or wherever they are. Half of them don't even care. They never respond. So, it's costing $5.80 something cents for that letter. So, I'm going to support this tonight. I think anything that we could do to save the citizens' tax dollars, we'll do it, as long as the transparency's there, as that's important. So, yeah, I did support this back then, but today's different.
Thank you both for sharing that perspective, and thank you, Dave, as well. I appreciated the amount of research that went into the 2008 proposal, Todd and staff, I don't know who was all involved, but there was actually an analysis done with what other cities are doing. And it looked like at that time, three cities out of them, and a few of them didn't respond, were using certified mail. And I like the fact that, knowing it's first class now, and I agree that deliverability will improve, but when you think about, and you go back and you read through, it was a strong 5-0 vote, and it was well-supported, and I would imagine you've got public input. And today, in respect to rezoning, the magnitude, let's talk about what rezoning is. It's changing the restrictions on somebody's property. And because of that, because of the magnitude of that, it warranted the belief at that time that people, we should do, here's the key, everything we possibly can to get in touch with that property owner. People move here, make long-term decisions to move here, and when they do, they know the rules on how they are today. The football's kicked, if you will, and then the goalposts tend to move. But in many times, it's in the best interest of the public to move, and I'm not disagreeing with that. But when we look at the magnitude of a rezoning and what it, what it does to someone, and you go back to the data, it was, it was worded crafty, where it said only 22% of the people at that time, or 22% of the people did not receive certified mail. And I found that fact to be very valuable. It'd be interesting to see. I don't know if any data has been done, if we're relying on any quantitative data today or it's merely how we feel. But let me reverse that statement in 2011. That means 88% of the people received that mail. And then when you, and we can't get away, we can't just stick to the website. State law, correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, still requires us to use regular mail, when I was looking at the statutes. So, the, when the city said, "We're going to go above and beyond for these particular instances, a rezoning, a big deal," and it happens more often, going back to the public notices, due to the magnitude, I went in and I said, "You know what? That is a lot of money from your calculations, and it's a little bit more than that, and thank you very much for getting that information over to me from the spreadsheet." And I can provide all this to you, Mia, for record if you want, but the way the summary reads, it says that, I think, we're at $6.80 for the hard cost for mail, and then there's another estimated 70 cents in labor put in there for a total cost per certified letter of $7.50. If you multiply that by the 6,907 forecasted estimated people that will need to notify for the three changes, that puts $51,000, to Mayor Hoag's point, on the taxpayers in these particular zonings, being that we are the applicant. When you just stare at that, it certainly makes you stand back. That could go towards sidewalks and other things. But the other side of that is, well, what's, what's the proposal? And the proposal is to do, let's go with 50 cents estimated for first-class mail with, you know, a reduction in the labor, and I understood your logic there, which takes us down to, you know, $5,871, which is a substantial decrease in state, from 50,000 down to 5,000. I want to applaud staff and appreciate their ability to figure out ways to keep costs low. And so, that, I think, is where I'd like to kind of stop and work around with council and staff to set. When I ran the numbers, it's actually a little bit higher, which doesn't, it came out to be, from the USPS website, $52,000 total that we'd spent. But when I went in and looked at, what was the intent? The intent was to verify that they received it. And then you get the benefit with certified mail of seeing a ledger. The cost that I ran, if you ran a certified letter with the electronic confirmation, you're at $4, and I applied the same 35 cents- you're at $4, and I applied the same 35 cents because there would not be this inbound of paper to deal with, a very modern way, to everyone's point. This probably wasn't offered 11 years ago to work. That cuts, that's $20,000 difference than this, the scare of what we see. So now we're looking at a $30,000 investment, which brings me back to the original comment. For $30,000, which is $4.40 a head, do we not feel, in addition to the modern ways, knowing that 88% of the people are going to receive this, is worth it to, to get a very important document in their hand? Whether the liability to me for them, not necessarily from a legal point, because we are following law, but from a public perspection point, perception point and optics, is Cape Canaveral, when you say, "Hey, only two or three cities do it in the county compared to others," I think that you can flip that and say, "That's bragging rights. We're one of three cities who do this." And that's something that we can be very proud of. And to say, so the first thing is, the, the estimate is $20,000 off from my research. So it's only 30,000 to, to mail those folks, which is substantially lower. And it is something that, Mayor Ogg, I think you've said, "Yeah, we were tight," but, and, and I think Mayor Protim Brown, you've even echoed it at times, is, "We didn't borrow money, we didn't do things, but we didn't have anything we were proud of." But when I look at this, this is something that I'm proud of, that I looked up to, to you in 2008 for doing. And the other folks that served on that board were Buzz Petzos, Dr. Shannon Roberts, and Leo Nichols, rest in peace. I had a chance to speak with Dr. Roberts today as well, and she said, "I still feel strongly about this, knowing this today." And I appreciated to hear from both of you in that respect. So knowing that it's $30,000, not 50,000, and then looking and considering an outsourcing through a mailhouse to cut down on those labor costs, I could see this getting even at a more affordable cost lower. To me, due to the magnitude, I, I think it's worth it. And it, the worst-case scenario is that people get engaged. This is customer service. And if we are going to perform good customer service, we saw a substantial increase in our budget last year, specifically in community development. And again, I appreciate the cost savings, but to me, this is a drop in the bucket for what we're getting. Now whether this is legal or not, and we might hoop and holler, but throwing in a, a little card for community engagement to, to increase the value of the mail? Maybe, that's a good idea. But the intention in 2008, I believe, was good. I do not believe it's lost value. If there's any data today that can say, "No, Wes, you're wrong." The, the deliverability rate has decreased. I appreciate mail. I'm professionally in marketing. And I know that mail works. And when I poll people in the community, we can look at the number of reported concerns that came over since 2016, three to, or 400, 500 or so. That's low. When we look at Facebook engagement, it's low. Mail is the greatest way to reach people, and certified mail is higher transparency and that extra effort that I think makes Cape Canaveral different. So that's how I feel. I'm open to change my mind as well, and I certainly respect it. And those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think, I think that we have changed, oh, excuse me, Mayor Protim. I think that we have progressed as a society. As we said, we are more technologically advanced. You have your phone and your computer out constantly. And I, I mean, I think that people are getting the message. So I don't think we need to go on and on about this. I think that it's a good decision that we made when we had the first reading. And yes, I think things have changed, and we have proven that things have changed. And we want to be progressive. And I think that the things that we've done have been constructive. This is, this is something that will also be a constructive method for people to get the message. And they are getting the message, Wes, and you know that. Thank you. I support this ordinance. Thank you.
Yes, I support the ordinance also. And, and Mr. Morrison, you want to, or Councilman Morrison, you want to be on record as having the city pay additional, what is it, $20,000? Because you don't feel the efficiency of the regular mail? Is that basically what you're saying?
When we talk about spending money and priorities, I put communication very high, certainly above things like amenities. And when we think about, yes, for the, let the record show that Councilmember Morrison believes that 25, 15 to $20,000 investment in certified mail with the new electronic verification process is a very cost-effective investment to communicate with your citizens on something as substantial as a zoning change. This means you moved into your property, and someone might have the right to change their use of that property and put something up that you didn't know about. I want to see it on the website. I want to see it on City Hall. I want to see it on the applicant's property. I want to get it in the mail. And if I'm not home that day, I want to know that my city, especially when we're the applicant, did everything possible. And $20,000, to me, is a wise investment.
Do you know of any situation where that's happened before?
Any situation where what's happened?
Somebody wasn't notified?
Or a public notice? Yeah, yes.
When?
I, we have someone raising their hand from the audience now. Mr. Campbell.
Give her a chance to talk.
So, yeah, there's, there's been countless, if you go back to 2008, 22% of the people from Todd's data didn't even receive it, so there would be an example.
Mayor, if I could address that? Just to clarify for the record, my recollection of 2008 was, that was an ordinance modification to classify the non-certified pieces of mailing as courtesy notifications. That was the purpose of that ordinance. In addition, we were doing certified mailings prior to that. When I came to the city in 2002, we were already doing certified mailings. Just to clarify.
Well, if you're clarifying, let me clarify that 110-28 was part of a consolidation ordinance that was adopted in 2005, where the city decided to consolidate various quasi-judicial rules in one section of the code. Okay, so in 2005, 110-28 was created. But I can tell you that at the time, that the certified mailings goes way beyond that. It was in various places of the city code for the various applications. So 2005 was when 110-28 was created. But certified mailing, who knows when it started? You'd have to go back and look at the legislative history of each of the individual sections of the code that was in existence in 2005 to figure out when those were adopted. They probably go back decades.
As a homeowner, excuse me, but as a homeowner, I trust first-class mail from the U.S. Post Office. And certified mail usually is something that has to do with a legal matter. I can't think of a time, as a homeowner, since I've been a homeowner since my early twenties, I cannot think of a time during that entire time that we've owned a home that I have received any type of a certified mail in all of that time. We get all of our mail from the U.S. Post Service, and it's not problematic whatsoever. So I support this, and I would like to move ahead to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Just let me rebuttal that, if you don't mind. Do you not think that rezoning is a legal matter?
Of course it's a legal matter. However, things have changed. And the way that even city council operated years ago, we don't need to operate the same way that city council did in the past. I mean, yes, history is good, history is important, communication is important. However, we don't need to go on and on that, yes, people who were on council before have different ideas because our, the times were different. We have to keep up with modern times. My goodness. We don't want to be stuck in, in the mud with dinosaurs.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment in, in conclusion? And I promise I'll keep my mouth quiet after this, or try to. I mean, really, the only difference between a regular certified, a regular first, piece of first-class mail and a certified mail is we get a return receipt when and if the owner, the, the person who's getting it signs that. Whether we send it first-class or certified, it's going to the same people. So we're not sending it to anybody less or anybody more. It's going to the same people, whether we, whatever kind of postage we put on it. And just because we send a piece of letter certified mail does not mean that that person is going to get it any more or any less than a piece of first-class mail. It's going to the same people. The only difference is that with certified mail, you have a return receipt card that we get back and we put in a folder. And that's a record, paper trail of who's, who signed for that letter. So we know who got it. With our first-class process, we have a record of everybody who it was sent to. And we also have a record of when those letters are returned, undeliverable. So, Mr. Morrison, I think your, your concern that more people will get and read a first-class letter is, I'm not going to completely go along with that. Excuse me, certified, yeah. So, but the, the only thing that piece of certified return receipt mail will do will be, cost the city a lot more money, frankly.
The the task to deliver certified mail does not require multiple attempts? Okay, so that's a substantial difference between first-class mail. So I heard you say a couple of times, "The only difference, the only difference." There's, that's a significant difference. And the reason why is be-
Multiple attempts is two times. They try it at your house, if you're not there to receive it, then you have to go to the post office to get it. So if you don't want it, you're not going to go to the post office. Then it dies and it goes back to where the origination point is. So it's not really multiple attempts to deliver it. There's only one attempt to your residence, and the rest of the time's up to you to go get it. And you have so many days to retain it, to go get it.
And, and frankly, I think there's more of an, I think our deliverable percentage is going to be higher with first-class, because somebody can't refuse a piece of re-first-class mail. They can refuse a certified letter, and they do often. I know exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, do you have any data to support that statement?
Support what statement?
The fact that you believe first-class mail will have a higher deliverability rate than certified mail. Because the number that I have is in 88% deliverability rate, which means it would need to exceed that, and that is, excuse me, 78%, which is a very, very good. And if the goal is to send it, that's what the state says. The state says you have to, to your point, you have to send it to these people, meaning hit the button and nothing else matters. Certified mail takes it above and beyond and says, "We want a connection made." And knowing that 88% gets a connection on a zoning change for a few extra dollars?
Wes, yes, I do.
That's, that's the, that's the core issue.
I do. Because I, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But it is different than first-class mail. If it wasn't, why would it be $3 to $4 more?
That's exactly why the, well, yeah, we, we do a lot of mailings in our department. A lot of mailings, probably more so than anybody else does. So I think I have a pretty good idea of, of, of what's going on with mailings. And the way I'm able to gauge that, in response to your question, Wes, is that we receive a, we, we get our, we get cards back. When an individual won't accept the certified letter, we get those back, so we know how many there are. We also, the post office will also return a first-class letter that's undeliverable. They'll also do that. And no, I can't sit here and give you specific percentages. But I can tell you anecdotally that first-class mail has a higher deliverable rate.
And we respectfully disagree on that one, and I brought the data to prove it. We can't rely on qualitative data. It's one thing to say, "Hey, it's $20,000, but who's doing the calculating here?"
Well, that's pretty qualitative. It's a $20,000 savings to the city of Cape Canaveral. That's data.
That, and that's, but for return, in the summary, it says that, that was provided, I believe, by you and your department, Mr. Dickey, it says here that $37,500, based on the, the 5,000 estimate used at that time, is negatively impacting limited resources. But there's a big however there. However, there's a return on that investment. And if we do not value, Angel, you've shared a very nice statement about the people who don't understa, who worry about the cost of everything, do not know how to value anything. I would ask that we consider applying that here and thinking about, "I live in Cape Canaveral. They want to change my zone, or someone next to me wants to change my zoning. They just mailed me. I missed it. It happens. It gets lost." City goes, "Hey, we mailed you. Here's the record." Not Cape Canaveral. We do it better. We go above and beyond. 2008, it was a good idea, and today, I think it's still a good idea.
Okay, I'm going to let public participation come into this, because we got two cards. First one I had was Charles Hazler.
Well, Charles Hazler, I had four comments. I was going to squeeze into three minutes. And I'm in favor of continuing to use certified mail. But a lot of my points have been made back and forth. So I think what I'm going to say in two minutes and 44 seconds is, I've lived here 30 years. I know that all of you work hard for almost nothing, or nothing, I'm not sure, to do the best you can. But we're at a point here. Bear in mind, we are at a point that has never occurred before, it will never occur again.